We're good to go?
We are good to go.
Good evening, welcome and thank you for being with us tonight to hear from the candidates for the office of Oakland City Council District Five. I'm Gail Kong of the League of Women Voters of Oakland. We are the sponsors of this candidate forum. For background, the League of Women Voters is a trusted, nonpartisan organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. Though the League does not support or endorse candidates or parties, the advocacy arm of the League may take positions on issues such as ballot measures. This forum is presented by the Voters Service and Education Arm of the League, which does not take positions and does not advocate for candidates. Here are some reminders for this evening. The candidates have all agreed to participate under guidelines set for this forum. In order to maintain neutrality, campaign literature or other forms of campaigning such as buttons, T-shirts, signs are not to be displayed in the virtual forum. We are recording tonight's forum and broadcasting it through KTOP, which is on Comcast Oakland Cable 10 and U-verse Channel 99. The session will be available on the League's YouTube channel for broader community access, and you can find links on our website, lvwocland.org or through votersedge.org/CA, and you can live tweet us at L W V underscore Oakland. We have one race on the agenda tonight for the position of Oakland City Council District Five. There are three candidates running for this position. They are Noel Guio, Zoe Lopez Maras, and Richard Raya. So let's go over a few ground rules. Each candidate has two minutes for opening remarks. The order was determined in advance by the League in a random fashion. We actually pulled papers from a bowl. The timekeeper, who the audience will not see on the screen, will signal the candidates with an indication of time left by the presence of a green, yellow, or red tile icon. Questions were submitted in advance and were screened to avoid duplication and personal attacks. We will alternate the order in answering the questions, and each candidate will have one and a half minutes to respond to each question. Again, the timekeeper will signal candidates. There will be no separate rebuttals. However, candidates may choose to use some or all of their one and a half minutes to rebut the response given by another candidate. We asked the candidates, I'm sorry, we asked that the attendees tonight use the Q and A icon to submit your questions as the public chat icon is not available for tonight. After the prepared questions, we will review the questions submitted by the viewers, and each candidate will have one and a half minutes to respond. Candidates may choose not to use all of their time allotted. Following all of the questions, each candidate will have one minute for a closing statement. Okay, let's begin with the opening statements, which will be two minutes. Our first candidate will begin now. Richard?
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, and it's really an honor to be here tonight with LWV and talking to the voters in general. So my name is Richard Santos Raya. I grew up in Oakland and benefited from a really wonderfully diverse background, diverse in culture, diverse in economic and social experience, and I'm happy to speak more about that as the evening goes on. Taking all the lessons from this upbringing, I went to law school. I graduated from law school just last year, and since then, I have been working at Centro Legal de la Raza, which is one of the premier legal services organizations here in Oakland. And there I run their youth law academy, where I teach the law to high schoolers several nights a week. In fact, I just finished. So sorry if I seem a little hairy. You know, throughout my time in law school and throughout my time just growing up in the Bay in general, I have had the blessing to benefit from a variety of mentors. Mentors who taught me how to ask stronger questions, how to be a better and more effective listener and a more powerful ally. You know, and I'm looking at these national debates. I'm sure many of us were last and really realizing that locally, nationally, and globally, we are hurting for leaders who listen. We are looking for creative champions who can put their finger on the issue, who can advance authentically held, long-held progressive ideals and values. Those are the ideals that I cultivated growing up here in a blended, multi-ethnic, multi-educational background family. And those are the ideals that motivated me to run after a long summer of protesting alongside, you know, my colleagues and friends. And those are the ideals that I hope motivate all of us as we head to the ballots this autumn. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Our next speaker is Zoe.
Hello, I'm Zoe Lopez Maras. I grew up moving all over the United States. I had a single mother and I was the oldest of four, so it was very difficult for her to secure housing, to secure affordable housing options for us. And because of that, we moved very frequently. And so for me, housing is my top priority, not only because of the personal effect that it has had on my life, but also seeing like here in the Bay Area where it is probably our top issue, not only access to housing, but long-term home ownership. As an adult, I took on, you know, the burden of student loans because I knew continuing my education was important to secure a more stable future. And so I got a degree in biochemistry and molecular biology. And public health is incredibly important to me, and I can understand that public health is not only related to medicine and science, but it's again, housing, it's mental health access, it's quality food access, it's clean, green spaces for kids to play. There are a lot of factors that come into public health, and I would love to talk about all of them, and I'm sure I'll touch on many of them throughout the questions in this forum. The second priority is renewable energy development. Oakland is an incredibly toxic city, and it's getting more and more polluted. And also with climate change globally, we've seen the effects, you know, here in California with the wildfire seasons that we're now trying to grow accustomed to instead of dealing with them progressively. And so renewable energy development is my second priority, and my third priority is focusing on moving away from the carceral state, the punitive state that we live in, and finding other ways to work toward a safe future for everyone together. And thank you so much for having me, and thank you everyone for being on this call.
Thank you, Zoe. Our next speaker is Noel.
Thank you, and I want to first give thanks to the League of Women Voters. I've worked with you for many years. I've enjoyed the previous year's support, years of support, and certainly your commitment, your support, and not only to our schools, but to our neighborhoods. It's greatly appreciated. I grew up here in Oakland. I attended the local schools, graduated from UC Berkeley School of Business Administration, went on to work with the Oakland Unified, Eastside Union High School District, and as well as working here with the City of Oakland. I raised three daughters and a son here in the City of Oakland, and my three daughters graduated from Oakland High School, my son from Premon High School, and they're all graduates of UC Berkeley, Stanford University, and they have the graduate degrees from Santa Clara, UCLA, and so forth. And so I, we still live here in the Fruitvale area, and I had the honor of serving on the Oakland Board of Education for 20 years. Now, I have served on the City Council for eight years, so certainly I know the issues extremely well. I live in the neighborhood. I just didn't show up to run for public office. I've been committed, and I strongly believe it's not about what you say, it's what you do. We can make all the political statements that we choose to, but it's what you've done and what you're currently doing. And so for me, it's an honor to be here this evening with you, and I strongly believe that, that, you know, Oakland needs to continue to move. The priorities are very clear to me. One is a responsive public safety effort, housing, effective homeless services, business development and jobs, better school system, as well as now dealing with the COVID-19 issue. And so I'm honored to be here with you. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we're going to move to the prepared questions. Now let's start our first question, and the first responded on this one will change the rotation will be Zoe. What are your priorities for the budget and other programs to speed Oakland's recovery from the effects of the COVID crisis?
Yes, so we really need to be advocating not only at the city level, but with our county and our state representatives as well, working in tandem to get as much emergency funding and emergency relief that we can because of the repercussions of COVID-19. I am passionate about making sure that it's rolled out in a restorative way, in a racially equitable way. We're long overdue for reparations, and I think that our small businesses owned by people of color need to be prioritized when we talk about financial relief. You know, the diversity of Oakland is a very beautiful thing, and it's part of the fabric of Oakland, and we need to keep it here. We've already seen the effects of gentrification and that it has whitewashed a lot of the culture, and it has increased the income disparities that we see across, you know, racial identities. And so I want to make sure that everyone gets access to financial relief that they need in a timely way, in a low-barrier way. It's not helpful if the relief is rolled out in a way that has barriers so that when people try to apply, they're deterred and they're held back for longer than necessary when they really need the help. You know, as in tandem with that type of relief, we need to talk about defunding OPD and also progressive tax reform, because we're missing out between those two on almost $200 million a year. That could greatly go to social services. Thank you.
Thank you. So a reminder, this is a one and a half minute response. Our next speaker will be Noel.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that question. Certainly, I know the budget extremely well. And the reality for us to stay in balance, we have to, you know, take some drastic actions. And recently, we passed the budget in July, and certainly we, the group that I worked with, had a balanced budget that was approved by administration, and the reality that we heard at that time, that considering the 19 issue at that, in July, we're projecting a $70 million deficit in the City of Oakland. And the fourth quarter report will be coming out in October to the Finance Committee to clearly reevaluate the budget deficit that we're going to experience. And when it comes to the CARE Act funds, we may need to be able to, be able to use those funds to stay balanced. If I want to keep all our employees employed, and that was our target in July, we wanted to keep everyone working and not being laid off. So we're going to have to make some serious decisions. For me, is I got to have a balanced budget. I got to keep my workers employed. And so the debate will be in terms of, you know, do I use some of the care funds to stay employed, to provide a service? And I'm willing to do that and willing to support that, to keep people employed within the City of Oakland. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard?
Yeah, thank you. You know, this is an emergency. There's really no other way to put it. This is an emergency. The fracture lines and stress points of our economic system have been explosively laid bare due to COVID. And I think we are in a position now where we need to take, as the incumbent said, drastic action. However, I think we all differ on how to do that. I would collaborate with the county and with the state, and I would also look into our emergency funds. If not now, when? We are in a pandemic and a climate crisis, and we want to make sure that we're not laying off our workers. We want to make sure that we are continuing to produce high-quality policy and produce high-quality service for our constituents. I think cracking open the reserves, I think this is the exact kind of moment that our emergency funds are there for. Outside of that, I think continuing to explore equitable revenue increases such as the progressive business tax. And I think overall, just being willing to be innovative, listen to new voices, listen to voices that have been excluded from the political process, and make sure that we are providing care for our most vulnerable members of our community, because care trickles up, right? If we take care of the grassroots, the rest will follow. So, thank you.
Thank you. So our second question, and then we're going to keep rotating on who goes first. On this question, Noel, go first. The question is, do you support Proposition 15 that would generally require that commercial property be reassessed to market value on a periodic basis, generating new money for local governments and schools? What other suggestions do you have for securing additional funding and other resources needed for the city? So Noel, you'll go first. You have to unmute yourself.
Yeah, okay, I got it. Thank you. Yeah, certainly when it comes to schools, I know the school system extremely well, from the state level to the county to the local level. And currently, there isn't a, there is a need to maintain our facilities, improve facilities, but at the end of the day, it's about equality education, having a quality instructor to allow my children to be able to grow and compete in the workforce and throughout. So when it comes to education, that is my number one priority. I've raised four children here in Oakland that graduated from the Oakland schools. And, and so I understand the system. I understand the need from Casamont High School all the way to McLean's, because I've lived that experience, and certainly I will support the ongoing greater support from the state level, the business level, the foundation level, including, I'm one, when it comes to the budget within the City Council, I always make sure that we direct some resources to the Oakland Unified School District, whether it be in the area of restorative justice or allowing, allowing the materials and the internet and other instruments to allow our children to continue to grow. Because in reality, a substantial number of our children don't have all the tools necessary, don't attend school like they should be. We have 50% absenteeism in some of the schools. If I don't go to school, well, I'm going to be behind. So my goal in supporting that proposition is to make sure that our children, especially in Oakland, continue to grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard? You'll have to unmute yourself. Good.
Yes, I support Prop 15. I wholeheartedly support Prop 15, and I think it's kind of silly that it's taken this long for us to come to a place as a state where we admit that it's appropriate to reassess corporate property. I wholeheartedly support that initiative. It's a great way to formalize or memorialize our commitments to education, especially as a classroom educator myself who was making $1,000 a month at one point and had to live with my grandma. I think, you know, let alone talk about materials, I think it is, it's essential that we recognize who we're fighting for. We're not fighting for corporations, for landlords. We're fighting for students. We're fighting for markets. So yes, yes, I'm Prop 15.
Thank you. Zoe?
I will vote yes on Prop 15, and I fully support the measure. And industrial properties at market value, you know, the working class and the poor are the ones carrying the tax burden in this country, and it's intentional. You know, the rich continue to utilize loopholes in our policies because we don't write effective policy or because some of the people writing the policy are actually in the pockets of the rich. So I absolutely support Prop 15 and, you know, getting, I think it was almost $12 billion a year to our schools and communities. So absolutely, I support that.
Our third question, and on this one, Richard will go first. What measure should the city take to respond to our homeless crisis? What do you see that has been effective, and what additional actions will you take to help people find stable and safe housing?
Thank you. Yeah, thanks. I think that we need to take advantage of our massive vacancy rate that we have here in Oakland and find permanent, long-term solutions to homelessness. You know, you ask what solutions I've seen that work, and what's unfortunate is I'm a little hard-pressed to remember that many because a lot of the solutions that we have been enacting here in the city, especially over the last eight years, have been piecemeal, while well-intentioned and while having seen some success, haven't had the structural lens necessary to really serve people who've been affected by the housing crisis and gentrification. Right? So housing people and our vacant property, right? Constructing deeply and long-term affordable housing with no barriers to access for our homeless community, and reallocating money in our budget, say, from the police budget to fund not only construction, but reentry or rehabilitation services, job programs, things that make that transition smooth and, you know, grow our community, strengthen our community, and get everyone back into the swing of society. Thank you.
Zoe?
So my immediate step would to be to utilize the empty housing that we have in Oakland. We have four empty units for every one homeless person. It's not an issue of, you know, inventory. It's an issue of compassion and council members willing to be proactive and respond. I've been trying to contact various council members since before the pandemic, and it's almost impossible. I actually haven't heard back from anyone in particular, but currently the council doesn't have a solution for homelessness. The only option that they offer is to continue to push these people out of sight and out of mind. You know, the Life Enrichment Committee just proposed a new homelessness policy to be voted on on October 20th, and that further, you know, demonizes and criminalizes homelessness, and it tells people where they cannot put an encampment, and it doesn't tell them where they can go. This is going backwards. We need to step up and support the encampments that already exist with wraparound services while putting them into all of our empty inventory that's in housing, in dormitories, in hotel rooms. You know, RVs, a lot of these people do have RVs, and they want to keep living in them. Everyone has a different opinion on what housing looks like to them, and we need to talk to these people living on the streets more to find out what their unique needs are, because it is different for everyone. We're missing out on really low-hanging fruit by just talking to people and actually putting them directly into care. You know, I, for example, build tiny houses at encampments, and I know these people well, and I'm ready to do it. Thank you.
Noel?
Yeah, thank you. This is an area that all of us are directly involved. And currently, right, you know, we've been working on a number of housing projects in District Five. The Unity Council will be coming up soon with their 200-plus units right on the transit, Fruitvale Transit Village location. We just completed in 18 affordable, low-income housing, the new comment that'll start within this coming year. We're going to not only have affordable housing, low-income housing, as well as 36 units for homeless individuals. I'm currently working with the Laow Family Center. We're in the process of working with the county. I'm going to make the purchase of Motel 6 that's over on 85th Avenue in Hagenberger, towards the airport. And that's going to be 60 units. We want to be able to house those that are being released from prison, from jails and ex addicts that are being released, so they need a place to go. Because what's happening, we're turning everyone, you know, releasing people from prison. They're winding up on our streets. They don't have a place to live. They don't have a job, and so therefore you can see the growth in terms of crime that's occurring in East Oakland that I grew up in before. So I clearly understand that we need to create the housing, but not only are they going to provide the housing, but training opportunities and job opportunities. And I'm also working with Agnes Memorial Church, right on Miller Avenue and International. That whole block is going to be turned into senior housing that accommodates 200-plus seniors primarily that are living in their cars, that are living in that neighborhood in terms of being homeless. Thank you. Thank you.
Our next question, Zoe will go first. Considering Oakland voted overwhelmingly in 2016 to establish an independent police commission, how do you see Measure S1 impacting that desire on the part of the community? How will it enhance or support productive outcomes for the work of the police commission?
Yes, I support Measure S1 because it provides the resources that the police commission needs to be more effective in their current role in investigating police misconduct. You know, prior to all the protesting, Oakland knew very well and expressed it clearly in the streets that there was an issue with police misconduct in this city, and we've seen it in the overpolicing of, you know, predominantly neighborhoods of color. We've seen it in the overpolicing and no care provided in the corridors of human trafficking that we know about. We know that we have a lot of rotten apples in this department, and I support providing more power to the police commission so that they can thoroughly investigate and have, you know, more ways of actually helping the people of Oakland rectify the issues that we're seeing. You know, not only in Oakland, but we're seeing it across the nation, and we're seeing other cities respond by listening to the people and withdrawing, you know, the militarized power that we've given the police department and really taking a step back and listening to the community and finding, you know, resolutions and different creative solutions to safety by working with members of the community and local organizations that have been reimagining public safety for a very long time without weapons and without the police department.
Thank you. Noel?
Yes, I am actually one of the authors of the Police Commission, the Citizens Independent Citizens Police Commission. The citizens came to me first, and I led the effort in reaching out to Councilmember Dan Cal, because at that time, his chief of staff has served over in San Francisco with the San Francisco Police Commission, and he helped us further create and develop the process and also the language to get the Citizens Police Commission on the ballot. And the voters passed it by 74%, and currently we're going to put it back on the ballot, and I made the motion to send it back on the ballot to strengthen, to strengthen the oversight of the police department, not only from the employment opportunities to make sure that the action that occurs on the streets is in the hiring of the police chiefs. As a matter of fact, we're recruiting a police chief, Gail, if you're interested. And certainly the police, the police commission will do the hiring and firing, and but when it comes to certain policies and work with the council to make those into recommendations, to make those into policy. And I'm currently working on some right now that we'll be bringing forth to the police, to the City Council. But it's a valuable commission for the City of Oakland. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard?
Yeah, I emphatically support Measure S1. You know, people don't work for the government. Government works for us, right? People don't work for the police. The police work for the people. People don't work for the police. The police work for the people. So anything that builds out a structure which supports citizen oversight and citizen accountability mechanisms on the police, I support. So S one's construction of independent inspectors, right, moving that outside the purview of the police department to something that exists within the Citizen Commission, the Civilian Commission, is just one of many, many steps we can take to curb police unaccountability and to increase overall the 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 health of our democracy and the engagement of our constituency. Thanks.
Thank you. For our next question, Noel will go first. The A's organization would like the city to sell them the Coliseum property. Do you support or oppose such an acquisition by the A's and why?
I, you know, that that's public land. When it comes to public land, I've always said that land belongs to the public. Whether it's a five thousand square foot parcel or it's the Coliseum property, I believe that that public must retain ownership. I am willing to establish a lease with the conditions that if anything goes wrong, the city that that land goes back to the city. So I'm not, I I'm not willing to sell that property, whether it's the Oakland A's or a private developer. There's an interest by private development now to be able to pick up the Coliseum and continue the professional sports efforts. And but I am willing to to entertain and we're we direct the city administration to go and negotiate with the Oakland A's several months ago, but they haven't delivered anything back in writing or verbally in terms of their willingness to work with the city of Oakland on that property because they're still trying to negotiate with Alameda County. That comes up October fifth. And so the answer is no, that I, that if, you know, I'm willing to entertain a lease effort, but I am not willing to do it below market value. But I am looking for job creation opportunities, but that public land needs to belong and maintain with the public.
Thank you. Richard?
Yeah, you know, similarly, public land is for public good. Public land is for public good. And when we sell out that land to to any entity that's not the city, we take our hand off the steering wheel and lose a lot of tools to ensure that it will continue to serve the public's needs. So currently I oppose that sale and sales like it that would remove public land from the purview of the people. Thanks.
Thank you. Zoe?
I would echo Richard's sentiment. We do need to maintain public ownership through the city of the Coliseum. I think the city needs to do better at investing in East Oakland and D B's Oakland and not, you know, keep gentrifying other areas of Oakland. There are a lot of job opportunities. There's lots of infrastructure already between the Coliseum and BART in that area to provide a lot of jobs and businesses and, you know, public gathering spaces in in a safe way and really revitalize that part of Oakland because it's long overdue and I think it could be a really beautiful option and help kind of spread the beauty of Oakland.
Okay, thank you. Our last question, Richard will go first. The city has not revised its business tax structure for several decades. Rather than put a measure on this ballot, the council decided to convene a blue ribbon panel to make recommendations to restructure Oakland's business tax. What do you see as the benefits of having such a panel? And how will a more progressive business tax benefit Oakland?
I think the benefits are few. The benefits are marginal. You know, like I said earlier, we, we being if we make it aspirationally, right, we, the government, work for the people. Right? The government works for the people and the knowledge is within the people. So I would have supported putting that measure on the ballot this year. I think the voters are sophisticated enough to understand what they're voting on and are concerned enough about their community that they would have voted yes on that measure. Because the benefits of a progressive business tax are not only in bringing in more revenue, not only in memorializing our progressive values as as a leader of social justice in Oakland, but getting in line with so many other major Bay Area cities who no longer institute a flat tax rate on on their biggest businesses and small businesses alike. You know, Clorox and and the other large businesses that are housed here can afford to pay at a higher rate than the Taquerias and Mom and Pops that that we live with in D five. So the benefits of a progressive business tax are many. The benefits of the the Investigatory, the Research Commission that we now have, instead of having it on the ballot this year, are we may create a more nuanced structure. We may construct this progressive tax with more community buy-in, with more research. But I think the voters were ready for it and I would have put it on the ballot this this cycle. Thanks.
Thank you. Zoe?
I was disheartened to find out that the the measure was further postponed. I was really looking forward to be able to vote on that this year. You know, Oakland's long overdue. Like you said, it's been decades for for progressive tax restructuring. You know, when people say tax the rich, it's it's not this ambiguous phrase. It's not a trendy phrase. They're saying that we, as the working class and as the poor, are tired of carrying the tax burden of this nation. And, you know, as we see with our president, I've paid more taxes than our president. And the rich continue to use loopholes and that's not only the rich individuals, but that's also these companies and corporations that come to places like the Bay Area and gentrify it because of these tax incentives that we give them to be here. So I I wish that that would have been a measure on the ballot this year. We're missing out on almost forty million dollars. At least that's the projection a year. And so we're long overdue in taxing at, you know, a gross receipt tax. We're just continuing the the income divide and disparities and, you know, it's causing small businesses to shutter. And we need to start investing in our everyday people that are keeping this economy floating and our essential workers and really advocate aggressively for real progressive tax reforms.
Thank you. Noel?
Yes, I voted against the proposition. And I think it was poorly defined. It didn't give people enough time to provide input. And and most of all, it was, even if we had approved it, it wasn't gonna be on the ballot until two years from now. So for me, it was an opportunity to work with the Oakland Chamber, with some of the minority chambers, from the African American to the Latino chambers, because they were opposing the measure because they didn't have enough time to have the input. The reality is the reality, I need jobs in Oakland to stay in Oakland because if anyone grew up here and said, you know, you weren't here when we had big businesses hiring people, they all left. That's why, look at the city of Emmerville, many other businesses went there. They're now in Berkeley where before Berkeley was, you know, you couldn't do business. But but the reality is, even Clorox is an example. Clorox used to employ thousands of people in Oakland. What did they do? They left. All they have is just a small part of their business and say that they're in a minority city. But the reality is I need to keep businesses in Oakland to hire people, to take care of my children and families. And I recognize that we need to do things differently. But the Oakland Chamber of Commerce is key to attract, to bring people to Jack London Square, to the airport specifically, East Oakland. East Oakland was a hub for job growth, but people left due to safety, due to all the city conditions about taxation, because Oakland right now is one of the heaviest taxed cities in the state of California. Thank you.
Now it's time for the candidates to answer the questions from the audience. Rachel, are you ready to start with those questions?
I am, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, our first question is from an audience member who's concerned about violent crime in Oakland, especially affecting people of color. And that person asks, what solutions will you implement to reduce violent crime in Oakland? And what can we learn from other cities with lower violent crime? And the first person to respond is Zoe.
So other cities with lower crime rates, they have more public resources. They have better funded public schools. They have better funded after-school programs. They have job security. You know, they have more parks and and well-lit streets. You know, these are a lot of services that I've been advocating for this whole time. And what we've seen is, you know, we continue to increase the budget for a police department, but crime rates haven't gone down. And so it's pretty basic math to see that that's not the solution to keep funding a department that doesn't work. I don't think we would do that with other departments. And so what I've been advocating for in defunding O P D is reallocating that budget that we have for the police department into the services that I just mentioned, you know, upgrading our schools so that they have the technology to keep up with schools that are doing better across the nation, you know, up upgrading our parks so that that all the lights are working and people feel safe to be there at night and have places to congregate, especially, you know, during COVID where those spaces to meet in a safe way are few and far between, especially in areas that continue to be underfunded and under-resourced. It's, you know, what we're seeing with the elevated crime rates right now is people's needs not being met because they've been out of work for over six months because all of our government levels are not responding appropriately and quickly enough with the care that they need and financial relief and social services and adequate COVID testing. It's a complex issue, but it's also solvable.
Thank you. Noel is next.
Yes, when at the last budget, working with some of my colleagues from East Oakland and West Oakland, we clearly defined the budget that we approved to provide greater support to East Oakland families as well as West Oakland. And not only, you know, at the community level, but at the business level, we want to make sure that those businesses come back so they can hire our people, so they can support our children and families. So for me, it it's directing resources to the home. Everything begins and ends at home. And we have forgotten it. When you look at East Oakland, you know, there are many families and children without fathers because fathers have abandoned them. So then when you attend school, it becomes a challenge because, you know, I have a high absenteeism rate. So I want to make sure that we devote resources. When I was growing up here, we had the library open on Sundays. I had the school grounds open every Friday and Saturday. We wanted to play ball at the gym. We can go play. We want to play on the field. We could do that. But there was always a coach or a counselor that that would help guide us. But at the same, so I think we need to get back, how do we best serve the needs of the family? Because when it comes to East Oakland, we have the the highest poverty level, lowest income level, and yet the greatest need when it comes to emergencies. And so we're gonna reinvest to make sure that, you know, in East Oakland, not just the job creation, but supporting our schools to make sure the kids at home have the technology necessary to be able to study from home. And and so I I support the the financial contribution to East Oakland. Yes.
Thank you. And Richard is next.
Thank you. And thank you for the opportunity to answer this question, which is something I feel really personally passionately about. The question is, I saw it written in the Q and A, specifically mentioned murder and victims of color. And my birth mom was murdered when I was five years old. And that has been something that has informed my political approach and my personal approach, really my entire life. And it makes me take seriously these questions of reimagining public safety. This is a really deeply held conviction that that I I look forward to sharing more and more with the Oakland City Council. You know, the predominant solution for decades has been, well, to decrease murder, we got to put more cops on the street, put more cops on the street. And we haven't seen that work. More cops on the street does not stop murders before they start, does not stop crimes before they start. The old nineties myth of crimes of opportunity has been largely disproven. Most rapes, most murders, most robberies occur within intimate contexts with people that we know. So how do we stop this? We change the economic and social conditions. If you look at communities with less violence, like the question stated, they are replete with social services and or they are replete with wealth. So instead of spending money more and more on police who don't actually stop these issues before they start, you know, one of the biggest indicators of criminality, criminality is second grade literacy levels, right? Flood schools with behavioral health experts that disrupt the school to prison pipeline. Flood cities with job opportunities and people won't have to turn to these illicit markets and and criminal activities for survival. And that's why we can all be safer. Thank you.
Thanks. I think we only have time for one more question. And this last question is, what's your vision for the future of Oakland's libraries? And I'll start with Noel.
That's where that became. That was my school. I mean, I couldn't study at home because I had a family that was dysfunctional. None of them graduated from high school. And so my place to get away, go do my homework, was the library. And it was, they used to be right there on International Fruitvale. And so that's the Latin American libraries, we call it now. And so for me, the libraries are extremely, for me, especially in East Oakland. Because if you go by, sometimes you see the children sitting outside on the curb along the library. Why? Because they have access to the internet. And so the the libraries are a key educational location for some of us that didn't have a family structure or setting that valued education. That's where we wound up going. And I still remember Señora Flores at the Latin American Library. She was not only my disciplinarian, my educator, and became my mom. Because we all went from the neighborhood in the hood. Some of us were involved in all kinds of negative activity. But we went to the library on Sunday afternoon, Sunday evenings to make sure that we showed up on Monday with our homework done. So the value of the of the library in Oakland is extremely, extremely important to allow especially our communities in East Oakland to survive. Thank you.
Richard?
Thank you. I really appreciate the framing of this question. What do we see for the future of Oakland? And it's great that we get to really talk about the future. And me personally, my my vision, my prediction for the future of Oakland is it is so so bright. I think especially in the wake of COVID and these wildfires and everything, we have an opportunity to reimagine how we conduct ourselves as a city and how we deliver education and services to our young people. That's gonna make our future really bright. You know, libraries are hubs of of learning and social services, not just, not from the extremely young to the extremely old, right? So I see libraries as part of a larger web and spectrum of funding for outdoor learning opportunities, weekend learning opportunities, distance learning opportunities. Things that COVID and and the wildfires have shown us are real stress points in our current education system. Libraries can become hubs of of emergency services, of distance learning services, of outdoor learning services that create a more connected and and integrated community where everyone benefits from these strong community institutions. So adding, just adding funding even for, you know, the most motivated and intelligent researchers that I've ever met work at public libraries. So, you know, increasing our staffing and increasing their ability to support our learners and everyone in the community as a learner is only gonna make a stronger democracy and a happier. Thanks.
Thanks. Now for Zoe.
So when I advocate for public and social services, it absolutely includes our public libraries. You know, public libraries, sure, there there are lots of books there. There's lots of educational material. But it's also very much a safety net service that fills a lot of holes that we get ourselves into because of the income inequality that we experience, because of the health inequalities that we experience. You know, just recently with the really terrible and unhealthy air quality because of our wildfires, some of the public libraries were open for, you know, certain hours during the day to provide better air and relief for our unhoused population. You know, the the S F Public Library System, they've all trained their staff to actually respond to overdoses because unfortunately, that's something that we're seeing more and more because we don't provide housing options. We see our unhoused population in these spaces, which they are more than welcome to come to, but we also unfortunately see some of the repercussions of some of the bad habits that they're stuck in. And so public libraries continue to fill the holes of our society. And I absolutely will work to make sure that they have all the funding that they need, all the staff that they need and expand on the services that they provide because it seems like it's taking a while for our city to respond and fill these holes that I just mentioned. But I absolutely believe that we can do this and we need our public libraries to do it.
Thank you. And I'll turn it back over to Gail.
Thank you, Rachel. Now the candidates will make closing statements. We will reverse the order that we began with. And each candidate will have one minute for a closing statement. Our first candidate will be Noel.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. And again, I thank you for the opportunity to be able to express our our goals and objectives and certainly who we are. And just for the record, I just want to share with you that I'm honored to have the the endorsements from the Democratic Party, Alameda County, the Alameda Labor Council, Buildings and Trades, East Bay Democratic, the East Bay Animal Pack, the Hispanic Engineers and Contractors, the Sierra Club and so forth and so forth, including some of my colleagues from Shan Tao to Rebecca Kaplan, Larry Reed and Lawrence Taylor on the City Council, Dan Kelb and so forth. And what what Oakland's gonna be challenged with is certainly not just with the COVID nineteen experience that we're all going through, but when it comes to education. that we're all going through, but when it comes to education. So I think that education needs to be Oakland unified, Oakland unified almost needs to be part of the equation within city government to make sure that my children and families are able to elevate themselves through education because that's a priority in the United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you. Zoe?
Um, firstly, thank you, everyone, for being here, all the hosts, um, all of the candidates, and as well as everyone attending the the virtual forum. Um, I just want to, you know, let people know that that this decision to run um isn't an easy decision. It's not fun. Um, it hasn't been welcoming. And the only reason I did it is because I am truly concerned about the fate of the city and the people around me that I love and care about. Um, you know, we're seeing systemic issues, and they require systemic solutions. And that means every person finding a role that they can fit in to help fix these issues around us. And it's, it's not gonna be easy, um, but I have the stamina and the energy and, most importantly, the compassion to respond and to be accountable and to understand these systemic issues. And, you know, outside of politics, there are a lot of ways to plug in, and I just want to remind everyone that there are many opportunities to help the communities around you. So check in on your neighbors. This is an incredibly difficult time for everyone. Um, you know, just say hi to the person that you pass on the street, and don't forget your own collective strength. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard?
Thank you. Uh, thanks again. It's an honor to be here, and it is an honor to sort of share our our stories. You know, I I also didn't just move here to run for office. I know Zoe's been living here for quite several years now as well. And, you know, I got my bike stolen from Diamond Park when I was ten. I don't know a more Oakland, uh, you know, memory than that. But um, you know, I think this is a year that many of us have been waiting for, maybe without even really realizing it. Twenty twenty is a year that has shaken up every core assumption about politics, about what we can expect from our government, about who can run and who should run. Uh, this is a year that that I've been waiting for my whole life, been preparing for my whole life, whether through law school, whether through my friendships that I've made here, whether through my work at Central Legada La Raza. You know, it's time to really uh vote for a listener, time to vote for someone who has deeply held progressive values about the issues. You know, our statements matter, our political statements matter. I'm honored uh to be here speaking with you all, uh, to have received endorsements from groups like the Green Party, from Oakland Rising Action, and to help fight to make Oakland beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Oakland, we thank the candidates for running for this office and for their participation this evening. Thanks too to our audience for attending and meeting the candidates. For further information about upcoming forums, the candidates and ballot measures, please visit the League's award-winning and easy-to-use website, L W V Oakland dot org or VotersEdge dot org forward slash C A. There you will find information about candidates and ballot measures and links to other sources of information about the upcoming election. As members of the League of Women Voters, we do the hands-on work to safeguard democracy. While we never endorse a candidate, we are directly involved in shaping important issues to keep our community strong. If you'd like to be involved with the men and women helping to make democracy work, it's really easy to join the League. We encourage you to visit our website at L W V Oakland dot org. Visit us on Facebook and follow us on Twitter. Look for our Oakland Easy Voter Guide, inserted in the October fourteenth edition of the East Bay Express. And a final reminder, the deadline to register to vote is October nineteenth. If you have moved or changed your name or want to change your party affiliation since you last registered, you need to re-register by that same date, October nineteenth. Online voter registration is available at the Secretary of State's website, S O S dot C A dot G O V. Remember to vote by mail or at the vote centers, which will be open starting October thirty-first for early voting. And please encourage your family, friends, and neighbors to vote. This forum is now concluded. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.